So let's go to item number sixteen, if that's okay with the city attorney. Andrew? You know what? It's seven thirty already, so let's, let's just go.
You're good to go.
Thank you, Andrew. Staff, how would you like to begin?
We have Ken Chalkins with us from NDC.
So, okay, this is a public hearing to receive public input regarding communities of interest related to the redistricting for South Pasadena Council districts. And I see Ken Chalkins ready to go. Ken, welcome aboard. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff and the public. Thank you. Glad to be here with you again for the third public hearing. I'm going to share my screen and I have a PowerPoint. Before I get there, I'll just mention that some of the slides up front are the same as you've seen before, but we present them again in case there are members of the public who haven't seen sort of the rules of the road. So let me share my screen. And we'll go right to it. Mr. Mayor, let me know when you can see that.
I can see it, sir. Looks good.
Thank you. Okay. The first slide is going to be taken by Victor Manalo from Trepey Smith to talk about the outreach. Let me try and get my stuff out of the way. Victor, are you there? Maybe it won't be. City clerk, do you know, do you know if Victor is on?
Christina?
Um, I just found him. He is coming on right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ken. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Victor Manalo, and I'm with Trepey Smith. And I'm just here to give you a brief overview of the outreach that we have performed on behalf of the city of South Pasadena for the redistricting process. I will just give you a brief overview of our report, but you can find the full report in your agenda packet. So to date, we've done a number of different outreach and public engagement efforts. We've had two virtual community workshops about redistricting and communities of interest, which Ken and I both participated in. One in October of 2021 and one in January of 2022. We created a dedicated website for the redistricting process. And, and we put out an informational mailer just sent out to all South Pasadena residents on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, promoting the redistricting process and the remaining schedule of workshops and public hearings. Social media, phone and email outreach promoting educational material on redistricting, including press releases and videos. And we distributed flyers to encourage public participation at the community workshops. The first public hearing as well as tonight's public hearing. We contacted community-based organizations via phone to inform them of the redistricting process and how to get involved. And we created a community survey encouraging residents to share their communities of interest through the city's redistricting website. All public comments that have been made around regarding this process are all still on the website. And that is the end of my report, Mr. Mayor, and I'll throw it back to Ken.
Thanks, Victor.
Thank you, Victor. And we have received a number of comments through the survey and other ways. And so, and as you'll see as a result, we have a good first pass at a number of different maps today. This is the schedule. You've seen this before. The area highlighted, of course, is the eighteenth of February, which was the deadline to submit the maps for today's date. And then you can see the deadline is the seventh. There's another five days to submit so that you can get your map in by the sixteenth. The final deadline, of course, is the seventeenth. This is a critical rules of the road slide. When drawing maps, you have to follow these first two column rules. The first is the federal law, Federal Voting Rights Act. Basically says that districts within a jurisdiction have to be relatively equal in size. Another way of saying it is a one person, one vote. It wouldn't be fair if one of your districts was significantly larger than the other. And you'll hear us talk about population deviation later. You can't have a spread that's larger than ten percent between the largest and the smallest of districts. Secondly, the Federal Voting Rights Act says that you cannot create districts that dilute the potential for a protected class. That would be a linguistic or ethnic group to have elected representation. It's important to note, it does not say a percentage or a number or any kind of specific guideline. It simply says you can't be seen diluting. And that's left to interpretation, but it's pretty clear that when maps are drawn that way, the court will call them on. Or somebody will, and the court will. And third, sort of the inverse of that, you also can't be seen circuitously going to capture or grab protected classes of people to create a district, otherwise known as gerrymandering. We often know gerrymandering in terms of political parties. You can't do that for racial groups. In the center, you'll see the four main items of the California Fair Maps Act, which was passed a couple of years ago, that put an extra layer of requirements in drawing these maps. These are in order of priority per the law. Districts have to be contiguous. In other words, touching to the extent that they are, they can be. There are some jurisdictions where it's not possible because there's something in between, but you have to make it as contiguous as practical. Secondly, you can't divide what are called either neighborhoods or communities of interest. And I've talked about this before. Communities of interest is a little bit more of a term of art. Neighborhoods are usually more easily defined. Communities can be defined by you in a lot of different ways. You can look at socioeconomic groups. You can look at seniors. You can look at school districts or religious areas or communities. The most important part of all this is that you need to be able to have on record what communities of interest you're trying to have represented. That's the important part is as you're selecting a map to call out what you're trying to have represented. And by the way, again, these are done and they still have to be no racial gerrymandering. You can't dilute, and you also have to have an equal population. The third, easily identifiable boundaries can be people-made, like a freeway or a road or a park or a shopping area, or they can be natural mountains or streams, et cetera. But you're well within your bounds to say we want to use a particular area as a boundary. And third, compact is one of those, you'll know it when you see it, there is a way to actually mathematically determine compactness. But it's really one of those things where if you've seen districts meandering around too much and they're not as compact as they could be, then you need to strengthen that area. So those are the four highest, high priorities of the state law. Then there's the federal law. And again, any map that you draw has to balance all of these as best as you possibly can in the, in the state perspective. And then the Federal Voting Rights Act is a little bit more severe in terms of what you have to follow. On the right are recommended and or not necessarily recommended. These are traditional ones, redistricting principles. You want to minimize shifting voters into different elections to the extent that you can. You don't want to take away someone's elected right by drawing a map, drawing a line. Similarly, you want to respect their choice if they've chosen somebody or some area, somebody in an area. You don't want to take away that choice by drawing the line. You all talked a little bit about future population growth a couple of meetings ago. To the extent that you know that your population is going to grow in an area because there are either sticks in the ground or permits pulled, and you know there's going to be growth, or like the state requirement for housing. You know where it's going to be and how, how it's going to look out. You're able to underpopulate an area. But again, it has to be called out pretty clearly where you're underpopulating and what the projection is. And to the extent that you can preserve the core of existing districts, if in fact, that's something that matches and meets all of the other requirements. So if you drew maps before the California Fair Maps Act, and they didn't hit all of these four areas, and you wanted to keep them, that would be harder to do in today's day because of the California Fair Maps Act. Let me stop and see if there are any questions. I can't see anything. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll rely on you to tell me if there are any questions.
Council members, I'm looking, I don't see any hands raised. I'm looking at council members, Mamud, Primuth and Donovan and Snimer. I see no hands raised. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. This is your current map. Again, this was done before the Fair Maps Act a couple of years ago, and this is what it looks like today. And the idea is to look at this and see what either needs to be changed and or adjusted in terms of a new map. The reason that you really do have to go through this in turn, other than the, the other California Fair Maps Act issues and or other neighborhoods or communities of interest, you'll see the percent deviation line is highlighted. So I spoke a little bit about population deviation. The equal protection clause or the Fair Maps, sorry, the federal law that requires jurisdictions to be relatively equal. You can see that the significant difference there in total was eleven point eight one. You have District Two that's below, six percent below your target and five, District Three is five percent above. You add those together and you're going to get eleven point eight one. You have to bring that under ten percent in order for the map to be presumed viable. And so that's, that's that plus all the other stuff underneath it gives you a lot of data about how you want to mix and match your maps and call out your communities of interest and your neighborhoods. This is the slide that we showed at the outreach efforts, and we've shown it before. These really are the questions you want to ask. What are the neighborhoods? What are the boundaries? Are there natural dividing lines or parks or schools, et cetera? And then, again, moving to communities of interest, it's a little bit more a term of art than law. Something for you to determine as a legislative body, what you're trying to get represented in the map. We did get some feedback from the public at the first public hearing in November. You asked about the logic of two thousand and seventeen, which we discussed, I believe, last time. You'll see that people have brought back a map from seventeen that they were interested in, and we'll talk about what that looks like. The Rena requirement of new housing. I think it was Councilwoman Amud who brought this up particularly. You can, again, underpopulate in terms of projecting where that's going to be, if you know where it's going to be and what kind of numbers it looks like. And then we heard about Altos, Hillside Community, south of Huntington, et cetera. And then there was a question about south districts. Should districts have all have a portion of a commercial district? It's a little touchier because commercial districts, to the extent that they don't have as many people living in them, they're not a community. It is something you can say, we want people to have a piece of a commercial area so that they're representing, or they feel like they have some skin in the game regarding to the commercial aspect of the city. But you have to look at the numbers about the people that live in the area and balance all of the other requirements. This is what we heard a lot of from your surveys. It's a little, not misleading, but again, everything that was mentioned, we tried to collapse it and not just put everything that was mentioned into this list. But you'll see some of the stuff that I think we all talked about at the last meeting. Indiana Avenue and Monterey Road, Monterey in particular, got a lot of discussion last time, north and south of. You have a significant homeowner and renter differential in Pasadena, in South Pasadena. The question is, how do you represent that numerically and balance all of the other needs? Traffic patterns don't play as much in drawing a map, but they do certainly determine the avenues like Monterey and Reno. School districts don't play as much they did in your school district. For example, attendance zones certainly played, but you're well within bounds to include that if something that, it's something that you want to include. And on down the list, the neighborhoods were called out. You can see all the neighborhoods there that were mentioned. And again, we, I can't say that we and or all the mapmakers took all of these into account for every map. It simply doesn't work that way. But you look at it, you have a feel for it, and you try your best to try and keep communities of interest and neighborhoods as whole as possible while balancing the population needs of each map. The tools that have been used, this is a tool, I have it up and ready if you want to look at it. This is a very, very effective tool. It's called the Interactive Review Map. Any map you want to look at is posted on the website, and this will allow us to drill all the way down to street level if you're unsure of where the map line draws from the PDF that you have in your packet. Happy to use this today. You've had three other tools. One is a paper kit. Literally, you print this off, you take a pen or a crayon or whatever you want, and you start drawing where you think the maps should be. Those numbers in the squares are population counts, and that will help you manually count it. Or if you're into Excel, you can use the Paper Map Tool, plug it into an Excel spreadsheet, and it'll do the math for you. There is something called Daves Redistricting Map, which is a relatively easy to learn and easy to use paintbrush style. We find it very, very popular. In fact, I think all, if not, most, if not all of the maps that were submitted online for South Pasadena came through Daves. And there is a heavier duty tool that will, has a lot more gadgets and gizmos that if you really get into mapping. This is the tool that our mappers use to really, really refine the map drawing effort. They're all online. These two are online and available for all of your residents who want to draw. So at this point, I'm going to go through the maps. I've made a couple of notes. I know that you have them. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to assume I'll run through all of them, and then we can talk. If at any moment you want to stop at one and drill in and look at it, please just interrupt me because I'm, I'm just looking at a PowerPoint at this point. Map, and oh, by the way, we call them the ones that were delivered by public members. We call them just public, not by last name. We find that it's a lot more useful to take the name out of it. The ones that we drew were labeled as ours with colors. And then the one we brought forward from two thousand and seventeen, the blue map is called Blue. So Public Map one oh one, you'll see that the population deviation on the left here is nine point one eight, which means you have almost close to ten, almost a tilt, but almost doesn't count. This is presumed to be a compliant map on the population deviation perspective. It has a good delineation as it relates to the Asian citizen voting age population, and that's something that you looked at for a protected class in South Pasadena with District Three at forty-two percent, District Four with thirty-one percent of an Asian citizen voting age population. You will see that this has Monterey Road as a significant dividing line for many of these, for the three, these three districts. But you will see a significant change here of District Five as it currently is, which is down south, moves this up, which pushes one over. Public Map one oh two, it looks, it's a little similar, but a little less. I would say compact only because this little area here down into just two into four bangles a little bit, but it's certainly okay. You'll see a very, very low population deviation. It doesn't make it a better population deviation. It just is lower. It's closer to zero. So you're less exposed, as it were, on that level. And the thing I, the notes I have here, again, you have a significant Asian citizen voting age population in D three and D four. Your Asian population sort of exists in this kind of crescent here. And that's, again, those are solid numbers to the extent that you're trying to not dilute that potential for an elected representative. I think that's all I have on that one. Okay. One oh three and one oh four are not balanced, and you may ask why I'm presenting them. Here's why. Number one, it's closed. But number two, if you said to me, we really like this map, we like the concept, we like the feel of it, but it's over. Can NDC please go back and try and balance it? We will. What we would have to do is, in this case, we'd have to move some of three over to five. I looked at the numbers, either five or one. So which means three is overpopulated. And if you like this concept of a map, we would probably take some of three over or this way or three into five. The only significant challenge, or just visually, but also this has a real long loop similar to your current map, what we call the bacon strips. Four and five doesn't change very much, but it certainly moves one and three, two and three. This is, there's a lot of change down this way. The real questions, and they weren't delineated, but where, what are they trying to represent here? Or is there a community of interest that, oop, wow, that didn't work. Sorry. Is there a community of interest that is represented in this vertical? Gosh darn it. I'm going to stop doing that. In this vertical look. But again, it's not balanced, but we could fix it if you said, hey, we really like one oh three. Please try and adjust it. Public Map one oh four is also not balanced. It's a little bit more unbalanced than one oh three. But again, we would, we, we would try our best. Five and three are over, and two is under. And so you couldn't just move five or three. We have what's called a ripple effect. You'd probably move three into two and two into one. You'd probably go around a little bit. But again, if you like the look and feel of this, I would note that the most significant element that I've noticed in this map is it really does split this hillside up here. And, and whether that's called out specifically, I think that was part of the Altos area, and it's something that you want. You'd have to define what you're trying to accomplish by moving to east into this area. Again, four and five are relatively the same. And then one pokes in this way. It's, it's a different map, certainly. And again, if you like the concept, I think we'd have to call out this area specifically and then talk about how to balance it. One oh five, I should call out, let's see, seven point five three, population deviation, well within ten percent. It's a relatively compact and a, and a horizontal east to west kind of map, except for District Two. You do have this sort of unique area over on the west side. Your citizen Asians, Asian citizen voting age population. You have four districts north of thirty-three percent. Two, three, four, and five all have, it's basically thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five, forty-two, and D three has a forty-nine percent citizen voting age population. That's important to note. But again, that has to be balanced with an equal population, which it is, other neighborhoods and other communities of interest. And so again, you can see, other than District Two, this uses Monterey Road, which you called out two meetings ago as an important divider for the map. Public Map one oh six, again, is also a good map as terms of population deviation. It does have four coming across Monterey Road, but one, three, two, and five are all either below, excuse me, or above. You do have this little tail in here, which is similar to the other one where District Two moved down. Again, these aren't problematic as well, as long as you call out what, what the mapper or what the council was trying to accomplish with this map. You have one, only one district is District Two has a citizen voting age population for the Asian community. That's significant. That's forty-two percent. There are another, I think five is a little bit more, but it, it takes most of the area in two. But again, this goes north, east, west, horizontal, which is again called out a couple of meetings ago instead of the bacon strips up and down. It does also have this little tail here for District Four. So similar to this little area and this little area, you'd have to sort of call out why you're doing that and explain it. We've seen maps like this, but it's important to call it out. Number one oh seven, three point eight one, population deviation. Again, you still see north and south, except for three and four, but three dips a little bit across Monterey. Let me read my notes here, one oh seven. It is compact. You have, again, D two in this case is your district that has an Asian significant citizen voting age population at about forty-two percent. And it does cross Monterey a little bit, but not as much. You can certainly see the change over on the east side of the city. And again, you have a little sliver here that you'd have to talk about and what that means and what you're trying to accomplish with it. But it's compact enough from our perspective, and the population deviation is solid. Okay, so let's talk about the blue map. There were probably five or six people that literally just said, how about the blue map from two thousand and seventeen? And while that was okay in two thousand and seventeen, it wasn't as okay this time for a number of reasons. Most, most importantly, your population deviation had changed such that you were a little bit over. We decided that we didn't want to obviously get rid of it for that reason. There are a number of people who made reference to it. And so we created something called Teal Map, which is close to, and I'm going to go back and forth, close to the blue. If you look at the top, this little area here in District Four, as I move to Teal, it drops down. That's the most, I think, the only real change in the two maps. Teal has a little bit of a higher population deviation because when you move that back and forth, that obviously has the spread a little bit more, but it moves what would otherwise be blue into compliance. And so we thought it was important to bring it into compliance because there were a number of voices that asked for it. And again, the Asian citizen voting age population is located down here in Districts one and two. Not as predominant as some of the other maps, but it is certainly noteworthy. Again, this is north, south, Districts three and four are above, one, two, and five are somewhat below Monterey Park, but not completely. And the final map that we, we have to call out is the green map, population seven point three eight deviation. Again, this one is above and below the line. They have an Asian citizen voting age population of thirty-nine and thirty-three. And I'm going to mention something in just a second here on that, but those are Districts one and three, again, down in the south. Let's see, closer to, and this is, this is closer to your map on the west side and the east side. And what it does is it takes Districts two and three, which were the bacon strips up and down, and simply makes them, mostly makes them north and south. So that's what I noticed when I was looking at the map. I do want to mention something. I, I ran through this quickly, and I made reference to the top line numbers. I don't want you to get fixated on them. I just call them out because they're important top line. You can get really lost trying to get too much into the numbers. I call them out because they're important numbers. But you really do have to pull the camera back and look at the overall map and see if it's serving the needs called out by your jurisdiction. So that's, that's the end of the presentation of a map perspective. Mr. Mayor and or others, I'm happy to either take this down, come back to you, and then go to the interactive, or else I'll leave it up for right now and just at your direction, tell me what you want to do.
Counsel, it's your pleasure. What would you like? Diana, go ahead.
Ken, thank you. I do have a question. I have two questions. One is, on each map, there's identification in blue of water area. What does that mean?
A good question, but, but I think what it means is that's a a key that comes with the system that we that the caliper, that's the magnitude that we use to process maps, so it's not something we can take off. I think if you had an area of water, a stream or a lake or a river, it would call it out.
Okay, so we should just ignore it then?
Yes. Sorry about that, but it's not something that we can take off easily.
Okay. And then you calculated deviations for each of the map, and the deviation is from the ideal. So could you review again what criteria is used to determine the ideals? And therefore the deviation from it?
Yes. The, well, the ideal number is to take your total population. I can go back. You know what? I don't, you may be right, Councilwoman. I don't know that we actually have the number there. I don't know that we actually have the number there. And I noticed that as I was running through it. My apologies. You would take this number 27020 and you would divide it by five. This is your 2020 census, you divide it by five and that is your target.
So it's strictly based on population then? That's the whole criteria?
Yes, and by the way, it's not voters, it's not residents, it's not citizens. It is total population. And that's important. You could have an area that's populated with a lot of kids, but doesn't have the voting age population to give the throw weight, et cetera, et cetera. But yes.
Okay, and then finally, how did you develop the teal and the green maps? Was that based upon your consideration of the total public comment and trying to see how best to accommodate the various and sometimes conflicting public comments?
Yeah, well, it's two answers. It's a good question and it really gets to the art and the heart of the matter. Teal, as I explained, because we heard a lot of input, and this says something to input, you know, the citizens, residents should know your, your voice matters. We had a handful of people send us, six, five, six people say, look at blue, look at blue, look at blue. As I explained, blue doesn't work by the numbers. So we thought it was important to take blue and adjust it. And that's what we did. We didn't change it anywhere else except so that we could make it most easily compliant by the numbers. For green, we certainly did. The person drawing maps took all the feedback we received online and all the feedback that we've taken from this, these efforts. And it's, you know, it's more alchemy, Councilwoman. It's, I wish it was easy. You try and balance everything you can. We know where the neighborhoods, we think we know where the neighborhoods are as best by your feedback and we draw as best we can. The other thing to note is that maps aren't drawn by streets. They're drawn by census blocks. So sometimes people want to say, hey, how about this street, that street? You, sometimes you can't grab a street. You, you can grab a census block. It's a long way of saying it's a mix and match of a lot of different items. And we really, really value and gain from your feedback. You can tell us, we got all this wrong and tell us where we got it wrong and what neighborhoods you want to represent. But we try and divine it from all the feedback is the best answer. Thanks, Ken. Councilmembers Donovan, Mayor Pro Tem or Councilmembers and I, are there any questions before we go to public comment? I see no hands raised by the council members. Ken, is it okay to go to public comment right now? Sure, I'm gonna stop sharing so I can, and I'm gonna take my face off there and I'm gonna listen intently. Great. Turn to our Deputy City Clerk Christina Munoz. And Christina, do we have any hands raised yet?
Mayor, I'm just gonna have you note that you are opening the public hearing.
Yes, officially.
Yes. So we had one emailed public comment that is posted online in the additional documents. And I'd like to remind those online. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand right now.
Christina, may I just ask what the, is, is that the one that you received by email? Is that something that I've received as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, it appears we have a four, four participants raised hands.
Great.
First, I would like to begin with Josh, go ahead.
Hey guys, two points. Number one, your last meeting, you talked about where the housing is going to go. Your draft housing element was rejected by HCD on December 22nd with innumerable comments. I personally talked to the person who signed that letter and almost everything that South Pasadena presented to HCD was rejected and not going to be accepted in the final draft housing element. So you guys spent a lot of time talking about, hey, where is the housing going to go? It really doesn't matter. You guys don't actually know that. That's point one. Number two, I think it's really important when you're designing these districts to put the Los Altos in its own district. Like for 80% of the city, like I live next to Jack in downtown where we could walk to everything. We walk our dogs, we walk to the park. Most of South Pasadena, people can relate to that. But up in the hills, that is a community that is a car-centric community. And they have different issues. They have problems with construction on small streets. They have problems with power going out and stuff like that. And it really feels appropriate that that part of South Pasadena does not get split up so that, you know, the other parts have similar people representing them. That is it. Thank you.
You, Josh, next.
Next is Ann Bagasau, go ahead.
Welcome, Ann.
Hi, sorry, still getting used to this Zoom unmuting. Just very quickly, I'm gonna speak on behalf of South Pasadena Tenant Union. We opted not to submit a map, but because we wanted to see all the maps that have been submitted and comment on those. And for us, the map that we would like to see or something as close as possible adopted by the city would be public map 105. You know, this, we feel that this best politically and socially is the most democratic for representation and is most in the spirit of the California law that requires that we do this. It's also not that much different from our current map, except for that weird little carve out that was in, in, I think it's District One. So we, you know, that's the map that we would like to see. We think it leads to a better balance of power on the council as groups which are important to us, such as low-income households, people of color and particularly renters are equally represented across the board on the council. And there's not an imbalance where all of rent, you know, the majority of renters and the majority of homeowners are in other districts. So we, South Pasadena union would like to see the council consider public map 105. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann, for your time. Next.
Next is Mary Erkhart, go ahead.
Welcome, Mary.
Hello. I first want to say that you certainly have given us all an adequate opportunity to comment. And I also have learned a lot about how, how this has to be balanced and appreciate the colored maps. Certainly some of the maps that you have 102, 3, 4, 6, and 7 really just don't seem to work. And I'm so happy that we have the colored maps. And I do see how the green and the teal make a tremendous amount of sense. And I know that you'll have one more meeting that people will comment, but I think that either the teal or the green are just terrific options. And I just want to say, I think that the job that was done on this is tremendous and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mary.
Next is Yvonne LaRose, go ahead.
Yvonne, you're back. Welcome back.
Thank you. Yes, I'm persistent. I'm, I'm looking at these maps and I, the one thing that, that is a curiosity, I guess, to me. Perhaps it's borne out by the demographics that were listed at the very bottom of each of the sheets. But I, and, but as Ken was talking about all the different options and all the different maps, there was an emphasis on the vote number of Asian voting population. And I don't understand why there's such an emphasis on the Asian compared with all the other ethnic groups. Can someone clarify that for me, please?
Yvonne, if you can, go through, finish your public comment and we'll answer all your questions.
That's it.
That's it? Okay.
Regarding the maps, regarding the maps, yes, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Yvonne. Ken, did you want to address that? Sure, happy to. It is simply, it's a good question. It's because that is a protected class of a significant number within the city. And if you'll remember, the federal law says you cannot be seen diluting the potential for election for a protected class. If the number is so significantly low, the Latino population, the African-American population, you still can't dilute it. But if they have no chance at all of possibly gaining a elective representation by a higher percentage, and again, the law doesn't call out a percentage. A lot of jurisdictions say 50 plus one, et cetera, it doesn't. But that's the reason. In, in South Pasadena, the Asian population is one that is of a significant number that you have to be careful, you have to be aware of that number so that you're not diluting it. That's the reason. Thanks, Ken. Christina, any more public comment? Christina, you're on mute. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Hi, Mayor. My apologies. That concludes the public comment and you can close the public hearing now.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. I don't have my gavel, I'm at home. And that's, so we can open up the third part of our, of this issue is provide direction on proposed district map. The next steps. Ken, you want to tell us what you need from us? It's what you need from you, actually, but I, but it would make. But I'm happy to go through these, talk about these. And again, go to the interactive map if you want to see these in any more detail. What, what would be ideal is if you came out of tonight with a clear sense of what you're looking for so that the next meeting, you might winnow it down. The best thing to do would be to winnow it down to a couple of maps. And I say that guardedly. Mr. Mayor, I have seen jurisdictions go from two to 20 and from 20 to two. And so, and, and then they have to eventually get to one. This is not, I think, Councilman Premeth, you mentioned last time how it's sort of the mind-numbing part of this. It's complicated. It's not, this isn't easy to do. And so we're, we want you to try your hardest to narrow it down to get either concepts or specific maps and then give us direction. Say, we like this map, but change this. I think it was Josh that made reference to Los Altos. Do you agree with that? And if that's the case, let's get rid of the ones that don't have Los Altos together. Things like that would be very helpful to narrow it down. Okay, so Evelyn's got her hand up first?
Yes, I like that green map. So can you show the public and go through it?
You want, you want me to go down into, dive deeper into it?
Yes, please.
Okay, so let me call that up first. Then I will share my screen. I'm gonna share. Cause I'm a sharing guy. Okay, so right now you, there are outlined, this is your current map. And the reason I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna take out the shaded, but I'm gonna leave the lines so that you can see now. Councilwoman, you wanted to see green, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if I overlay green, you can now see the outlines of your current map. And again, you'll see what I talked about, right? It used to be north and south and what it did is it pushed two up here and three down there. One is virtually the same, four and five are almost exactly the same. And I can, I can drill down to a street level if you want me to.
Yes, please.
How, where, where do you want? Which district?
Uh, one.
Which street?
Um.
If you give me an address, if you give me an address, I can get it.
Oh, okay. 1449 Indiana Avenue.
What is it? Four, 1419?
1449 Indiana Avenue.
1449 Indiana Avenue. Not in Indiana, there you go. Okay, so now if I pull out, you'll see where that is. Is it, or do you want me to get closer?
Oh, that's fine.
Can you, that search result, can you move the search results so I can see if that address is within District One? It, it is. I, I respect that. I think, hold on a second. Nope. Doesn't know, okay. But it is. No, but here, but here's the, oh wait. 1449 Indiana. Indiana Avenue. We can see it in Chicago too, if you care. Okay, so you can see, it's right there, right next to the one. If I close this, it's here.
Right, I'm in the hillside.
Okay, good, good.
So we see, what's the difference between the current map and this green map?
You can see that you're still in one. So one used to come all the way over here. The difference is District Three pops into one a little bit.
Okay, and where am I giving compensation for District Three taking away some of portions of District One?
It doesn't, it doesn't work in terms of compensation, but.
Well, I'm in population one.
But you can see, look, you can see District One moves a little bit into this district, right? Ah, yes.
Okay.
So it, and it doesn't really have to bounce because if, if your existing districts are way out of whack, you, you really have to take from some and give to others. That's just the way it works.
Right, okay. This one has a deviation of 7.38, so I'm good with this.
Okay, okay. Ken, John, let me, unless Mayor Pro Tem or Jack or Diana wants to go first, I was gonna ask a question. You want me to unshare or stay here? Stay there for a sec, you know. Okay, I'm staying here. Okay, I want to compare two. So there was some comment tonight, they really like this map, the green map. I'm with, I'm with Councilmember, it's an hour, I like this map too. But I also like, and there was a comment by Ms. Ann Bagasau and a number of people. 105 looks a lot like the green map. Okay.
Yeah.
So it's, it'll get a little too confusing, but if I over, if I overlay 105, it gets kind of messy. But let me take away green. Let me just tell you where I see the issue with 105. And the speaker is dead on, the numbers are right. It's well-balanced. It has, you know, decent compactness. Let me see what my notes are on 105. My notes are 105 or, you know, or it has a lot going for it. I, I believe, and am I right, is this whole area Los Altos?
It's blue, yes.
Okay. The, the issue would be, is this thing that sticks into District Two problematic for the Los Altos issue? And you can notice what it forces is this kind of connectivity, right? So that's, that, that is called contiguity, right? Cause if you had it swapped off, you'd have a problem. And so it's a little squirrely, but, you know, the rest of the map obviously holds together. And it, the numbers are good in this map. The issue is you had a speaker talk about Los Altos and this splits Los Altos. And I think, Councilwoman, I think 1449 is up in this area. I can type it in again if you want to.
Yes, please.
Yeah, it's, it's, and again, that's important, not at the up, not at the beginning of the process. Near the end to make sure you're not moving people unnecessarily. Yeah, you're, you're still at the border, but you're still within the blue.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Councilmembers Donovan, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have questions. I just need to study this in a little more depth. I'm glad that we were reminded of the communities of interest and the survey results. So that's, that's really important as I, and I know we have at least one more hearing to consider. And I know there's at least one more map coming to us because of one of the, one of my, someone contacted me and said that they were, their map is not, was submitted, but somehow is not presented. So I look forward to looking at that one.
Mayor Pro Tem, we found out that there was a wrong email address. So we got it literally today. We're, we're processing it. Frankly, it's, it's compliant, but we're gonna process it and we'll bring it back next time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I I just needed to dive into this, Michael. I I I'm just listening as much as I can.
Jack, did you want to, any comments or just you're listening? Jack, you're on mute. I'm not sure if you're seeing anything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments are pretty much the same as John. They've got to study them more, you know, as we, as we're narrowing it down. I need more, I need more study, um, Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Jack. Me just, I can't see everybody. Let me just look up, see Diane, how Diane is doing. Diane, sorry, your hands up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would suggest, just to simplify it a bit, that we toss from consideration maps 103 and 104, since they do exceed the deviation. That will simplify things just a bit. And notwithstanding its low deviation, I might suggest that we that we toss from further consideration 102 in that the District Two seems to be very oddly configured.
Yes, good, good point.
Which map, which map?
102?
102.
Sorry, here, wait, I'll, I'll do it again so you can. So that would be 102. And are you talking about this little area, Councilwoman? Yeah.
Yes.
Again, it's, I I've seen it done like this before, but it does stick out in this particular map.
Diana, which which ones are you saying we should just not push forward?
I haven't made that recommendation. I think at this point, it's simpler to eliminate some and then bring others forward for consideration, because they, as, as Mayor Protem and Jack indicate, this is complicated. You really need to.
I would echo that and say that getting rid of some is easier, and if you can chip away that way, and then we can bring back, that works as well.
Which, so which ones are you recommending? Get rid of 102, you said?
Yes.
And which other one?
Haven't yet.
Okay.
I thought you said 103 and 104.
Yeah, that's what I thought I heard.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, because they exceed the deviation.
Well, I I like 103 if it could be tweaked a little. It's not too far outside the deviation. And I'll just say, you know, I, I, I mean, that conforms to a lot of my district, which I got to know intimately, walking and biking it. And I think it it has, it has neighborhoods that I understand are pretty well defined. And it goes into the hillside there, which feeds into Meridian, so it's more of a natural basin. So I, I do like 103 if it could be tweaked. It's only 0.33% off, so maybe there's something that can be done there.
I'm okay with that.
Well, I don't like, I don't like 103 because you're taking out my, my renters.
Where at?
It's on Pasadena Avenue.
Okay.
And that's the only renters that I have, and they, and I have them as 45% of the votes that I, I got. So, no, I'm going to oppose on that one. Because then that's mainly Hispanic and sprinkles of Asians. So since the Asian is a protected class, I wanted to make sure they are in my hillside. And I got to know them intimately because I walked every single apartment from July to October. And I still, and I still, for renters issues, especially the during COVID, I interacted with them, and I think I represent the interest of the tenants and as well as the protected class, i.e. Asians and Hispanics.
So let's, let's see if, Evelyn, if it's possible to tweak it. So you're looking, I'm looking at the map 103. You're talking the area up by Mission.
Up on Pasadena Avenue, going towards Monterey Road, going to the freeway.
This, this area here?
Yes.
Yes.
I think, I I think I have a, something that may, that may work for you, Evelyn. So that would be the southern portion of District Three is, is heavily, is, yeah, the southern portion on 103, the southern portion of District Three has got a very significant concentration of renters, and I think that's what you said you were interested in.
Right.
So that, that could be, that could be something that could come over to District Five. And then for the law, for and then maybe there could be a tweak up between one and three.
Because if this is the case, then I have no renters. All I have are single-family homes.
No, I know, but this is, this is a possible solution to your very practical problem. I understand it. So what I might do is, is, Ken, are we?
Yes.
Should we, you know, this is all public, this is all, you know, our dialogue, but, but would how do we, how do we submit written requests?
It's a good question. So first, this is fine, by the way. This conversation is fine. I'm tracking as best I can. I heard about this area, and Councilman, I heard about this area. Right? And you're talking about moving it here. You said, what's going to happen is it's going to start to ripple around.
Right.
We can try and tweak based on it. I will tell you that the issue in this map is really that your, your, I think this is your district, right?
Right.
Yeah, is, is a long north-south, right? So to the extent that we can clip here and move it and move around, and then clip here and keep one, you know, and then keep it all balanced, we can try and, and do that. I I'm hearing that. If you wanted to submit public, you're certainly well within your means to send an email and say what you'd like to do. Or have somebody and or submit a map. We have members of council and jurisdictions submit their own maps.
Okay, thank you.
But are you talking about right here, right? You're talking about in this area here into five, right?
It's, it's something that popped into my head as I was listening to Councilmembers.
Yeah.
So.
And I heard her talking about this.
I I don't want angry letters saying, what are you doing, you know, trading whole chunks districts. It, it has this, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable, but I know we have to make a decision. So this is where, you know, as I try to get into this process,
Yep.
you know, it it becomes very real and practical, and there's a lot of consequences, so. So I would like, so if there's two votes against 103 as is, my proposal is to tweak it so that there's some more renters, possibly from the, from the southern portion of District Three, going into District Two. I don't even, I don't know if that's going to satisfy Councilmembers in Immer, but it's one practical trade-off that we could make.
Councilman, I also, just real quick, just note, we only have until, I'm reminded by the clerk here. We only have until March 7th to submit new maps, tweaked or not tweaked, or tweaked rather, than the ones that are not tweaked are fine, so that we have seven days before the posting, before the vote on the map. So we have a couple of days. We can take feedback here and all the comments we can get in the next couple of days before the 7th.
And Mayor Protem, in, in light of your expressed concerns, I would be happy to withdraw the recommendation to disregard 103 with the anticipation that some sort of tweet will be forthcoming.
Okay. What, what, what is this last proposal, John?
What is that?
Well, so so, you know, it's, it's a domino effect, right? So if Councilmember is in Immer feels like she doesn't have enough renters in her district, there's a, there's a transfer that could be made from the southern portion of District Three, which is contiguous, to District Two. Of course, that would mean there'd be, need to be an offsetting population shift somewhere else in District Three and District Two, which would logically be District Two would shrink a little more, and District One would would increase, or District Three could increase. There could be a swap between two and three. And in one sense, we're focusing in on this map, and I I almost feel like there's so many other formats that we could do this in. But it's, it's an idea I had as I looked at District Three. I didn't want to throw it out because I, I think it's, it's a district that I feel is cohesive for the most part. But I want to be sensitive to Councilmembers in Immer.
Thank you.
Can you, can I ask, Jack, in this map in 103, where, where is your, your house? Are you in, are you in District Three with John?
Judy, I was, I was not on mute.
Jack, you're on mute now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Perhaps Shalkins can talk a little bit more about the change in law and incumbency.
Yes, yes, please.
Not a factor that can be taken into account in drawing maps and should not be discussed as the basis for drawing districts.
But that comes in later on, doesn't it, Andrew, I thought? Not?
No, there's been a change in the law that could no longer be considered as the basis for maintaining.
Okay.
Right now, I'm on mute, Judy, but I, I.
You're not on.
Pick up, Jack.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, it's moving too quick for me.
All right, so, so what you're saying is?
Yeah.
As we, as we evaluate, we are purely going to consider neighborhood cohesion, all the other factors, without reference to where we are physically located in, in any particular district or any of our colleagues.
Correct. Previously, location and incumbency issues were allowed to be considered as one of those factors. Ken has outlined the factors that you have to analyze now. Where you live should not be considered in the factors.
Okay, that's fun.
And Ken, can you confirm that you've not drawn any districts in order to keep council members in or exclude council members?
Yes, that, that's correct. We, we haven't drawn them in order to do that. I, I would, I would add that there is a sensitivity to voters' preference, voters' decisions. If somebody was voted into a seat and a line, because of all the other factors, have been met, and a line moves that elected representative into one seat or another, that's something you can consider, but I think the city attorney has said it right. You can't use it for the basis of drawing the map.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that coaching. We need to sort of coach ourselves into a different mindset, I guess, is what, what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay. So one of the factors is what district populations and neighbors have recently experienced in election, a 2020 election versus a 2018 election. And, you know, having a wholesale shift of large sections from a recent, recent election. You know, in other words, you know, delaying their vote or giving them, you know, another, a, a vote two years after they already voted. That can be a factor as well. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we call that voter deferral. That's, that, and that is by definition what happens to some population in, in all of these efforts, but you try and minimize that.
So, so I'd like, I'd like, in addition to all the other consideration, I'd like my colleagues to, to tell me if voter deferral is an important criteria, because some of these maps would involve significant voter deferral.
How can you, how can you, let me, how can you predict how much is in your area, in your district, if you have the voters' deferral? Because population moved. I mean, so we consider it what's now based on the census.
Well, the way that's done is you, you, whatever district was up last, right, you see who, how many people in that district, how many voters in that district have been moved to a district that is not up next. At that point, you say that's the number of people that have, are being deferred. They would have otherwise gotten an opportunity to vote this coming up election, and they now have to wait four years rather than two. It's, it's not specific to a voter, but it's a numbers issue.
Would that, wouldn't that be a violation of due process because they cannot vote?
No, it's not a violation of due process. It's, it's, it's a byproduct of redistricting. And, and again, to the extent possible, we want to minimize that. But as the city attorney said, only after you run through the other criteria, the Federal Voting Rights Act and the California Fair Maps Act.
Okay.
The California Maps Act, they, that's the newest federal law that supersedes what was done in 2017. Am I correct?
Yeah, it doesn't supersede, yes, it, it provides a new rubric to use, absolutely.
But it's, it's not federal, it's state.
It's state.
Right, right. I understand that. Thank you. I'm talking about. So I, I think I'm with Councilman Premeth that, you know, will have Ken tweak it around to see if I claim my renters back, what would that do to District Two and Three? Because they're the ones impacted.
Yep. I, I, I can tell you this about that map, just as an FYI. In that map, 103, your District Three is over. It's significantly over. I think it's 6.03. And your District Five is under. So to the, and, and District One is under. So to the extent that you could take some of this area where are renters, if I'm not mistaken, that's what you're talking about, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
And move them into five, your population deviation would get better, right? And similarly, you, we'd have to sort of work on this area, Councilwoman. If that's an area that's important, we'd have to work on it to see if that disadvantages one and how we'd get around it. But the, but to, to the Protem's comment, this would help balance the three and fives. And again, that's, that's the kind of tweak that we would look at without disrupting too much.
Right.
Because you like the concept of the map, and that's what we would be after.
Okay, so we have 103 in the green map to consider.
And I have to get rid of 104 and 102, right?
Right. And I think we need to get rid of 108 because the teal is so much better. I know that the teal map is a kind of a derivative to the
Yes.
whatever is tweaked on the map 108. So we essentially keep 108, but it's better with a teal map.
And Ken, with regard to 105, for which there was a public comment in support, I would ask that you see if, if it can be tweaked to eliminate the lack of continuity in District Two and Three there at the bottom at the. in District 2 and 3 there at the bottom at the southern border of the city.
Say, say, what number again, Diana?
105.
105.
Let me just go there quickly. And that's the, the thing that we talked, you're talking about this here?
I'm talking below.
Yeah.
You see, there's that little slice of blue?
Yes, yeah.
So there's something wrong.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's not, it's not wrong. No, it's, it's contiguous, but the, the, the way at that is going to be to somehow find a chunk in here that doesn't throw the balance of the map out of whack. But we can take a look at it.
I agree.
Let me just throw out that map 106 appears to have a substantial amount of voter deferral.
Map, which one?
106.
106.
Okay, so. Let's see, yeah, you're, you're, you are significantly moving. And I, forgive me, I don't know which seats are up.
But Diana and myself?
4 and 5.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter. It really does slice and dice.
Yep. So 4 and 5, you'll still get a chance to vote for any of the ones that went this way. Right? But for all the ones that moved into another district, they won't.
Right, right.
It scrambles all the districts, it looks like.
This is a significant change, this one.
The 106?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we can get rid of 106.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
I'm okay with it. John, Jack?
Yeah, that's why I suggested it.
I figured. It was a good suggestion. Jack, you all right?
Hello, Jack.
Do you want to comment on that one, just to get a consensus?
You're muted, Jack.
I said, okay, I'll go with getting rid of 106.
Okay. We've lost.
I said consensus, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we've crossed out 102, 104, and 106, Ken?
And 108.
And 108, okay.
Which is the blue map.
Is that okay with everyone?
Hold on, hold on, Michael. 102, 104, 106, and 108 are the ones you want to eliminate?
108, I just want to check with everybody, just to confirm. Diana and John, let me try to pull you up.
Yes.
Okay. And John, you're okay with that too?
Yeah, the blue map. 108.
As, as the Councilwoman brought up, it's the same as teal, except for this area.
Right.
We just adjusted it to make it population balanced.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine. Yep, that's fine.
You clearly have an issue with even numbers. 2, 4, 6, and 8.
Guys, we're.
Okay, I thought, I thought we eliminated, excuse me, I thought we eliminated 106. Did I get it? Yes. All right, okay.
My, you know, another, another concept to consider is, you know, commercial districts that could share, be shared by council members, or even important corridors that could be shared. I mean, you know, Meridian is shared between Jack and I, I think for a good portion of it. And, and I think, you know, when you have two council members who are paying attention to a high-impact area of the city, they, you know, the residents, I think, feel perhaps better represented than if they only had one representative. So I can't, I think it cuts both ways, that, you know, you want a representative who focuses on your high-impact area, but at the same time, if it's important enough, you'd rather have the ear of two councilmen.
I do have some businesses too on Monterey Road.
Yeah, that's true. I was talking about Meridian.
So this is where Meridian is today. Council, Mayor Protem, you were saying this district and this district, right, these two?
Yeah, the southern part, it's the southern part of that. That whole border is Meridian, yeah.
Yep.
Councilmembers, just to let you know, we're getting close to 9 o'clock and we still got a lot of big issues on the agenda. So if we can try to wrap this up respectfully.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I would also suggest that we review 107 through the same lens that we looked at 106.
Let me just call that up.
It's the same issue?
The same issue, I'm losing my renters.
Is that what you're talking about, Councilwoman?
No, that's not what I was talking about. It really scrambles the existing districts.
That's right.
So I would suggest that we not further consider this one.
107, Diana?
Yes.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that. Jack, how are you?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, 107's out.
Yes.
Okay.
Helping you out, Ken.
Yeah, no, it's helping me help you here.
Can we, can we just do a brief summary of which ones we've said no to? I mean, I've got 10, okay, can I hear it from Ken? Which ones you have no to?
So the, the only ones I have out are the even number 102, 4, 6, and 8, and 107. What you want me to do is tweak 105, or see if we can tweak 105 to take that ribbon at the bottom out. And then there was another tweak of 103 to try and see if we can adjust to the, the issue of the renters. That, so you have 101, 103, 105, and 107, no, 103, 105, and 101 to keep along with teal and green. You have five maps.
Okay.
Yes.
Teal, green, 103, 105, and 107.
No, 101.
Sorry. Teal, green, 101, 103, 105. That's the five maps.
Yes.
With a, with a, honestly, with a very thorough, on-the-record conversation, which is really important.
Yeah, I, I want to say that 101 has some, well, never mind, we'll, we'll talk about that later. We could, we could keep, keep this going for a long time. Mayor, thank you for moving us along. I know there's so many people waiting for public comment and I, you know, I apologize to those who've had to sit through this, but this is, this is really important stuff.
It's the basis for our democracy, as it is.
It is.
The census every 10 years, biblical times. Ken, do you need any more from us? Or Andrew, what are your, can we move on?
I have what I need. We'll go back to work. The public needs to know they now have another window to come back. We will bring the map that was brought, Mayor Protem, from your, I think, constituent. We'll bring that, so you'll have six maps to come back, plus anything else that comes in. And we'll bring them back along with comments and everything else we can. And hopefully at the next meeting, we'll be able to zero in on a map for our first ordinance meeting.
Thank you, Ken.
Andrew, I'm sorry, did I, did I get anything, miss anything from you?
I think the only other one was, there was, did you get that map that was submitted today?
Yes.
That was going to be included as well?
Yeah, that's, that, it effectively is 109. But, but, but we'll bring that at the next meeting.
Sounds good. And all of those will be posted by the 7th?
Yes.
Then we're good.
And we're going to, every other new map is going to get an even number. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I just wanted to note that the maps are due by March 7th at noon. They will be reviewed by NDC for population balance and posted seven days prior to the public hearing, which would be March 9th.
And March 7th is next Monday, right, Lucy?
Correct.
Thank you. Andrew, with that, I'll, I'll move out of this item. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Andrew. Thanks, Ken. Well done, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, residents, for comments.